This is Valley Beth Shalom, and I'm delighted to welcome you all tonight to a conversation with our new city council member, Ms. Nithya Raman. So thank you for being with us, Ms. Raman. Thank you, Councilmember Raman. And I want to welcome members of your staff, Mr. Morales and Ms. Stahl. Thank you for joining us this evening for a conversation about our city. This is a very important conversation because this city is in a very precarious position. It is one of the most beautiful cities in the world, one of the most wonderful places to live. I grew up here. I went to school here. Raised my family here. And yet, as we walk the streets of the city, there are all kinds of things that we see that make us feel that somehow our city has become in some ways compromised and in some ways, in some ways even, even quite ruined. And so it's wonderful opportunity to talk with the city leader, Councilmember Raman, has been by the miracle of God's redistricting, has been Valley Beth Shalom finds ourselves in her district at this point. And because you're new to us and we haven't had a chance to get to know you and to share your vision of the city, I really cherish this opportunity to have this conversation. So thank you. And to everyone who's joined tonight, I'm really glad you're here. I'm going to be doing all the questions tonight. Why? Because I'm the rabbi, that's why. But if you'd like to make a suggestion, the chat box is right to your right. All you need to do is push a, put, suggest a question. Questions are suggestions, and I'd be glad to take up your suggestions. But please be reminded that according to the Oxford English Dictionary, a question is a one-sentence interrogatory that begins with the words what, why, when, where, and how, and ends with a question mark. If you'd like to make a speech at city council meetings, Ms. Raman would be glad to tell you how you can do that. You can go downtown when the council meeting and they have a little red light and when the red light goes off, you can give a speech. Otherwise, I'd be happy to ask questions because tonight I really want to hear how Ms. Raman sees our city and its future. So once again, thank you for being with us, for joining us for this conversation. Let's begin with an introduction. Tell us your story. How is it that you came to LA? How is it that you came to the city council? How is it that you came to this, to this district? So welcome and please tell us your story. And you have to unmute. You still have, there you go. I can hear you now.
Yeah, great. I tried to unmute before and I was not permitted to, but thank you. Thank you so much, Rabbi, for inviting me tonight. It is such an honor to be here. I'm so happy to be here. I'm so happy to be representing Encino, my whole staff, and I feel very, very lucky to be doing that. And Kevin Morales, who's here on this call, for anyone who hasn't had the opportunity to interact with our team already, he's your field deputy for the area, and I encourage you to reach out to him. He is a wonderful, wonderful representative for our office and extremely hardworking and will work very hard to solve the challenges that you're facing in your neighborhood. And I did want to say that we, we started representing Encino at late, late December last year when redistricting happened, and at least one member of my staff squealed when she heard we were representing Encino because she used to work at the early childhood center right here at Valley Beth Shalom as a teacher. And so I'm really excited. She, she, her enthusiasm was definitely infectious and we're all very happy to be here, but she was particularly so. I want to give you a very quick version of my background. I am an immigrant to America. I moved here from India with my parents when I was six. My father and my mother moved here for educational opportunities. I am now a mother of twins who are in kindergarten, boy and a girl, and they go to school at Ivanhoe Elementary near my home in Silverlake. So the district actually extends from Silverlake where I live all the way to Reseda. So it's an enormous district with 260,000 constituents as every district in the city of Los Angeles is. I'm an urban planner by training. I have an undergraduate degree in political science from Harvard. I have a master's in urban planning from MIT. And I spent many years before I moved to Los Angeles as an adult working on issues facing slum dwellers in India. So basically working on urban poverty in that context. And I moved to Los Angeles to be with my husband, who I've known since college, since we were both 18 years old, but who is here in LA because he works in the entertainment industry. He works as a writer for comedies on TV. I, my path to running for office was somewhat unique though. I have no background in politics. I didn't volunteer for democratic clubs. I never worked for an elected official. But when I had my twins, I noticed that there was an increasing number of people experiencing homelessness in my neighborhood of Silverlake and in the surrounding areas. And so I wanted to do something about it. I had worked in city council, in, in, in the city briefly for the city administrative office and had worked on homelessness there and knew a little bit about the issue, but I was startled to see how much the population of people experiencing homelessness was growing. And so I joined my neighborhood council, Silverlake Neighborhood Council's Homelessness Committee as its co-chair. And then through a group of neighbors that I met through working on that neighborhood council, not just in Silverlake, but in the surrounding areas, started a volunteer group called the Seela Neighborhood Homeless Coalition, which has now grown to be one of the largest volunteer-run homelessness nonprofits in the city. And I remember, you know, we did a lot of things. We walked from encampment to encampment because there were so many more encampments in Silverlake than there had been before in places where I'd never seen tents before. We got to know people experiencing homelessness and we realized that in, in that neighborhood, there were no services for people who were living on the streets. If they wanted to get off of the streets, there was really no path for them to do so. And so we brought those services as volunteers. We created a shower program at a local church. We paid for a case manager who came in every week and got to know the participants in that program, made sure they had their paperwork and moved them through what was a very, and what continues to be a very labyrinthine process of going from encampment into a home. And one Saturday, I remember, you know, and I was doing this work when I had a full-time job. I was working as the head of a nonprofit, a women's rights nonprofit. I had at that time twin, two and a half-year-olds, three-year-olds. And my husband was taking care of them on weekends. When I was at the shower program, I was writing grant applications at night after my kids had gone to sleep and after I came home from my paying job. And I remember one Saturday I was at the shower program and I looked around at all of the other volunteers who were getting ready to set up for the day. And I thought to myself, if our city officials felt the same level of urgency that I do to solve the issue of homelessness and they were willing to put in the work because it takes so much work, that our streets would look so different from what they do, what they, what they did then and what they do today. And so that's actually with the first moment that I thought about running for office. And just a few weeks after that, after discussions with my family and with my friends, I did announce this run and really won a historic victory. I became the first Asian-American woman to be elected to city council, the first South Asian ever to serve in city council. And I ran at a time when our city elections and our federal elections overlapped for the first time. And so we saw greater voter turnout all over the city in municipal elections, but particularly in my district, we saw a massive jump. Voter turnout increased by five times to almost 130,000 voters who were excited. I didn't get all of those votes. I got about 70,000 of those votes. But who were excited about the message that I shared, which is that the city has power to make change on some of the biggest challenges that we have facing Los Angeles. And that if they use those powers effectively, that we can see a better city ahead of us. And that message, I think, really resonated with so many people who were tired of rising rents, who were tired of losing their homes to gentrification and displacement, who were tired of seeing rising homelessness and feeling powerless to do anything to stop it. And since I've taken office, I've really prioritized taking action on all of those issues. I think that's probably all I need to say right up top. But I'm happy to continue speaking about my work on all of those issues. And I know that you're planning to ask about many of them as well.
Before we get to them, I certainly do want to ask about each of these issues because each one of them is so critical to the future of the city. But let me ask you a more general kind of question. I mean, usually we save this to the end, but I think it's important to start with this. Partly from your experience now in, in city government and partly from your, your vision and experience as a scholar of urban development. I remember Edward Gibbon, the great, great British philosopher, historian of the Roman Empire, talked about the idea that at a certain moment, Rome became an ungovernable city. That its, its, its diversity, its, its population, its interests, its politics, all converged to a point where nobody could govern the city of Rome. And that was the beginning of the end of the city of Rome. We all love living in LA. I love living in LA. I love the weather. I love the, the natural environment. But as I walk the streets of the city, sometimes I begin to think, I wonder if this city is governable. I wonder if we have the capacity, the political will and the political resources, the collective resources to meet its problems. So reflecting on, before we get to the specific issues, reflecting on the city as a whole, is LA governable or has it reached a point of being ungovernable?
I mean, I think this is the, the question of the hour, absolutely. I think there's a lot of people who feel like you, Rabbi, that, that LA has become ungovernable or that certainly it's not being governed, which is really what you're saying. You're not asking whether LA has become ungovernable. Really what I hear in that question is a sentiment, which is that LA is not being governed or that LA is not being governed effectively. And one of the reasons I wanted to run for office is because I actually do believe it can be governed, but that it takes elected leadership to step up and to tell the truth and to do the work in order to get the results that we need to get to. So I want to talk about the work. I think, let's say on an issue like homelessness or an issue like housing prices or, or, or renter protections, there is no easy path to resolving any of those issues. There is nothing easy about moving someone from a tent on a sidewalk off that sidewalk and into a home and keeping them in that home. There is nothing easy about protecting tenants who are living in their homes and facing extreme pressures from rising home prices and rising rents. And from a pandemic that I think has really impacted so many people's ability to earn the amount they need to earn in order to live in this city. There's nothing easy about impacting transportation here in LA to reduce traffic and to reduce the air pollution that results from it. And yet we have to do the work. And I think one of the reasons I was really excited about running for office and one of the reasons I am so excited about being in office is because I want to do the work and my staff wants to do the work. And that's what we're trying to do in this district. We've invested in a larger staff than most council offices. We have almost 30 people working for us. They work extremely hard. They're extremely responsive. And they know that it takes more than just introducing a motion or making one phone call or responding to one email to get things done. It takes going after the departments to make sure they're doing their work and holding them accountable for making progress. It doesn't just take passing a motion. It takes getting the data to make sure that that motion, which is supposed to protect tenants to stay in their homes, is actually doing the work it's supposed to do. And that's the kind of team that we've come, that has come together in our office. That's the kind of culture I'm building and that's the kind of work ethic that I bring to the table. But the second thing I do want to say here, and I think this is important to talk about, is that I think for a long time, we've had elected officials and city leaders who haven't been truthful to a lot of residents about what we need to do in order to resolve these problems. And I think from the issue of housing and homelessness, this lack of truthfulness has been the most visible. I think for many years, when there were encampments in neighborhoods, when they're, where they're traditionally were not encampments, our leaders told us, we'll get rid of them. Don't worry about it. And they said, you don't have to do anything. You don't have to change anything about the way that you're doing things right now. And we'll just clean this encampment up and it will go away and you don't have to think about homelessness anymore. They didn't say to us, as Angelino's, actually, we need to be building more housing. Not just housing for the homeless, but more housing overall because we need more housing to drive down costs. We need more affordable housing. And we don't just need to build that housing just in one neighborhood. We need to build it in every neighborhood across the city. They didn't tell us that. They said you could have your neighborhood look exactly the way that it is right now and, and, and have no more housing being built and that you could not see homeless encampments on your sidewalk. And that's fundamentally untrue. Those two things are connected. And I think I'm here because I believe that Angelino's are interested in hearing the truth about how we resolve these immense challenges and that they love the city as much as I do and that they're willing to do the work. And yes, there will be sacrifices and that they want to make those sacrifices to build the city that we deserve here.
So let's, um, let's take some of those issues. And I have lots and lots of questions, but we only have a very short amount of time. So let's see if we can cover a few of them in a little more depth. Let's begin with the one that you, you just mentioned. I remember as a kid growing up in this city, I remember going to New York to visit, to visit my family. And New York streets were covered with street people, beggars and people sleeping in doorways. And coming to LA and feeling I was free of that. And then somehow, a couple of years ago, they started, I mean, they moved westward. They, they started moving here. And now I don't think there's any part of the city where you can't see a very large number of unhoused people. In some places, there are whole communities of unhoused people, tents and vehicles and folks sleeping all over the place. And in some places, it's become downright scary, frankly, to walk around not knowing who you're talking to, who, who are the people on this neighborhood. So talk to us about that. I know it's a very complicated and very difficult and very complex issue, both in the short run and in the long run. So give us a sense of short run, long run. How do we address the unhoused problem in this city?
Well, so you talked about New York. Let's talk about New York for a minute. One of the reasons why New York actually has a larger number of people who are experiencing homelessness than the city of Los Angeles. But they have fewer people who are actually living on the streets or fewer people who are unsheltered. They actually didn't do this on their own. The, the reason why this is the case is because New York had a court case, and I'm forgetting now the year in which this court case happened. But the settlement from that court case mandated that New York had to have the number of shelter beds that it needed in order to house its unsheltered population. And it has maintained that proportion over the years. Here in Los Angeles, the primary challenge to addressing homelessness is that we simply do not have the shelter beds. We do not have the housing units to get people indoors. At this moment, from my latest count, and it's always a little bit challenging to get the exact number of shelter beds or housing units that are available, we have less than a quarter of the shelter beds that we need for our unhoused population in LA as a whole. If we had all of the beds that we needed, I can guarantee you that our streets would look really different. But for a number of reasons here in the city of Los Angeles, and the reasons are complicated and I think a little bit too much in the weeds to get into here, we didn't start making an investment in building that housing and building those shelter beds until very, very recently. And so over the last few years, because of taxation, investments in, in taxes that, that we actually voted for as a city, both in Measure H and Prop HHH, we have built more housing and made more services available than ever before. But it has been a lot of investment that has come very, very deep into a problem. So the challenge of homelessness has been growing for decades. We've only had something near the adequate amount of resources to take it on for a very, very short time. And so what's happening right now is that we are seeing these investments come online. We're seeing more of this housing getting built, but we're not seeing the amount of progress on our streets that I think a lot of people are hoping to see. And what I see around me is a lot of people who are losing their patience with the homelessness crisis, and I understand that. A lot of people ask me, you know, when I talk about beds and the, and the, and affordable housing and shelter beds and housing units, a lot of people ask me, but what about mental illness? What about drug addiction? And I don't deny the existence of those things. Those are really challenges that we are grappling with right now. There is a crisis of mental illness and a lack of treatment. There is a substance abuse problem that has been worsened and deepened by new kinds of drugs. You know, that by a proliferation of very, very cheaply available meth, for example, which has really been an issue here in, in, in Los Angeles because of meth coming up from the Mexican border. It's, it's impacted the East Coast less than it has impacted the West Coast. And that's a reality of homelessness here. And yet, mental illness and substance abuse are not new to Los Angeles. What was happening before though, is not able to happen now because of our affordable housing crisis and because of the lack of shelter beds. So let me put it to you this way. Let's say someone is struggling with mental illness. When their home was cheap, if they missed a month of rent, their landlord would let them stay for that month and make it up the next month if they were having a crisis for one month. Or if they were kicked out of their home, they were able to find another home at equal value. So they were able to stay housed. Now that's simply not possible. When a landlord knows that if you leave, they can raise the rent by a thousand dollars, there's much greater incentive to do that. And so the ability of people to be able to stay housed has really decreased. And once you lose your home, once you're living in your car, once you're living on the streets, if you are already struggling with vulnerabilities like mental illness and substance abuse, those challenges become so much harder to manage, so much harder to keep under control. And that's really what we're seeing on the streets. We're also seeing a lack of mental health support from the county. The county is our partner for providing mental health. Right now, here in the city of Los Angeles, I cannot get help. And I've been doing this for over a year. I've been trying to get help for people who have mental illness who live on my streets. I can't get help for someone who has mental illness unless they are literally at death's door. That's the only time when LA County Mental Health Services are able to step in. They have to be that sick in order for them to get that, get those services. And so what we've been doing in our office is really trying to go around these problems and find solutions to them that we can apply to the district and hopefully to the city as a whole. On shelter beds and housing, we are looking for motels, hotels and apartment buildings that we can purchase or rent through Project Home Key and Room Key funds from the city, from the state and the federal government. And we've been successful at doing that. We've added a number of interim housing beds to the district and we've effectively used those interim housing beds to get people off the streets and to clear encampments. We've cleared about eight encampments permanently because we've gotten everyone indoors and they have not repopulated. We are actually funding a mental health outreach team. So we have money from the, money from the, the city government to be able to fund a multidisciplinary team, including a mental health service worker who can do exactly the kind of work that I've been asking the county department of mental health to do for months. And my hope is that we can use that to really get people indoors. We've seen it work over and over again, and I want to keep doing that work. Over the past few months in this office, we've actually housed about 200 or more people over the past few months. And we've cleared encampments that have been around for many, many months, many years. Because of our focused work and our efforts at doing it, this is a problem that can be solved. It takes time. It takes effort. It takes money and it takes patience. But if we have all of those things, we can do it.
I know that there's great deal, great deal of details to this issue about housing and about real estates and about, but I want to, I want to ask you a sort of philosophical question that's related to this, which has to do with the cooperation between public and private. Right now, by the way, I have experience with a project my own family's involved in. My father moved out of his house. And we're trying to build a new home on the land where the house was. And it's only take, it's only taken two years to get it zoned. And now we're six months into waiting for building permits. And we're just a, a family that wants to build a home, more housing in LA. So I, I'm, part of it's a bureaucratic issue, but, but I think this is a very deeper issue. And, and it goes to the question of like, how do you create public and private cooperation to create housing? After all, the city's not going to build this housing. It's going to be built by developers. But if rents can't be collected and if, and if bureaucracy makes the building of homes, of housing so difficult and if you keep bashing those who develop, not you, of course, but if, if those who develop property are told that they're somehow criminal for wanting to charge rents that are seem to be fair within the marketplace.
Yeah.
Tell me about how, how we create a, a cooperation and a, and a symbiosis between public and private investment in housing.
Well, first of all, I don't want to say that I don't, I don't make, I, I don't make it my business to demonize developers. That has never been my approach to this. I know that many people do in LA and I, I really don't. I think what we can do is to create a system of rules and regulations that limits the possibilities for corruption, of which we've seen a lot in Los Angeles. And one of the reasons we have a lot of corruption in Los Angeles is that so much depends on individual council discretion and upon the discretion of individuals within the elected offices to provide permits and to provide variances from our existing plans. We need to be creating a system of rules and regulations that is clear, that is easy to understand and that everyone can follow and where everyone agrees on what we want as the outcomes for each neighborhood. Once we do that, let's take out individual council discretion from it. That means that we are building the city that we want to see because we've all agreed on the system of rules and regulations and the possibilities for corruption are gone. Rabbi, you mentioned that we don't want to, you said we, we, we don't want to enable people to collect rents. I don't think that it, where did that, where did that question come from? Where did that statement come from? I want to understand that a little bit more.
Isn't there a moratorium on, on evictions at the moment?
There's a moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent due to COVID, COVID-related reasons.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to evict anybody in the city of LA under the best of circumstances.
Right.
Then you have this moratorium. So if I'm a small property owner, and I'm not, and I wish I was, but if I was,
Yeah.
what incentive is there for me to invest in property, in real estate, to build something? If the city's going to show up and say, well, you know, you can only do this. You can't do this. You can't do this. You can't do this. You can't do this. I'll invest my money someplace else.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we make it very hard for people to build, for people to build housing in the city for sure. And we make it hard for, for people to invest in it. And I think exactly the challenges that you're talking about in terms of rent collection and in terms of, you know, following some of these rules and regulations are leading to smaller landlords leaving the rental market and to a larger number of corporate landlords taking over. This is not just a trend in Los Angeles. It's all over the country. And I think those landlords have historically been less friendly to tenants. They've been harder to work with when, you know, in terms of keeping people in their housing. So I think you're right. We need to think about how we make this an environment that is conducive for smaller landlords. I actually think that what we did during COVID-related rent relief was a good model. We made a lot of rent relief available directly to tenants. But for landlords who didn't get payment from their tenants or who didn't have tenants who applied for that rent relief but still didn't get money back, we actually made that rent relief available to them as well. We've made mortgage relief available for people at the state level. There is a huge amount of effort that has gone into ensuring that some of the pandemic-related renter protections, which I do believe were necessary. I think those were important to make sure that people were able to stay housed during a a shock to the economy that we had never seen before. I mean, I, I, I will defend those restrictions. But I do think that we had enough funding coming from the federal and state government into the rental market that enabled both renters and landlords to make sure that they were able to stay whole during this period. And I think that is the goal of policymaking here, right? The goal of policymaking shouldn't be to punish one group of residents over another or one group of actors over another in LA. The goal of policymaking should be to get to the outcomes that we want in Los Angeles. And I believe that if we work hard enough and that if we design the programs effectively and if we hold our departments accountable, that we can build a system that is equitable and that is fair and that really enables both tenants and smaller landlords to thrive. I, I do believe that. I think we just have to work a little bit harder at it.
So let's move now to a different, a different issue. The, it's a strange contrast between something we see and something we hear. I think every, everybody who's on this call could tell you a story about crime rising in their neighborhood, about home break-ins, car break-ins, some horrendous stories about muggings on the street, attacks, especially on some older people. Everyone has had, everyone knows these stories. They're, they're published frequently in some of the newspaper, the neighborhood newspapers. And at the same time, we hear voices that are talking about defunding the police. That, that what LA needs is fewer police people rather than more. And the contrast between those two realities seems to be very difficult. So talk to us about policing and crime. So talk to us about policing and crime in this city and where you stand on that particular issue.
Well, I want to talk about some of those statistics around crime and um, and to say that, you know, where we have seen some alarming increases in certain categories of crime over the last, let's say, year and a half, uh, two years of the pandemic. Um, but I also want to say that I feel at least somewhat heartened that some of those reversals or some of those increases in, in certain categories of crime like homicides. At least in the beginning of twenty twenty-two appear to be falling citywide. Um, so you know, for example, Los Angeles saw a huge spike in homicides, uh, as many other cities did. Uh, but over the first two months of this year, we've seen fewer than we did in the previous two years, which I think is, is heartening. So, you know, I wanna I want to take, you know, I think this is a very fearful time for so many people and that's really, really important to acknowledge. And it's really important to acknowledge where we are seeing concerning increases. But I also want to make sure that we are following the numbers closely and understanding where those increases are happening and where they may be showing signs of change as well. One of the other things that has been hard for me as I've been watching these numbers change is that the causality, the, the why homicides have gone up, for example, so much over the pandemic or over these past couple of years is not clear. Um, you talked about defunding the police. If you look across cities in America, we saw a massive increase in homicides over the past couple of years. And actually, this number increased across cities no matter what they did to their police budgets, whether they increased them, whether they decreased them, whether they didn't touch them. We saw an increase in homicides across American cities regardless of their policies on public safety, regardless of their investments in public safety. And so for someone like me who really comes to this issue, it comes to real, I hopefully every issue that we're working on with an emphasis on research and data and trying to understand how we can follow the evidence in our policymaking in Los Angeles. I don't see a clear line to say, here's what happens, here's what we did and here's what happened as a result, so here's what we need to change, you know? But I want to also focus on what we can do and how we can respond to some of the things that I'm hearing in our neighborhoods. So one thing I'm hearing a lot of in our neighborhoods is that when there is danger, when people feel in danger, that police don't come quickly. That it takes a very long time for people to come when you call, right? And that's a problem. I think we need to make sure that when people are feeling really in danger, that when there, when there is violent crime, when there is a situation where they really need help from, from LAPD, the LAPD is able to come. And I think one of the ways in which our office can support that is by ensuring that we are having police officers time reserved for exactly those situations where they are needed. For example, when there's armed violence happening or something like a home break-in. And leave some of the other work that we are currently calling police for to trained officials who may be better trained for that. So for example, one of the biggest things that I hear from police is that they get called out to do work related to homelessness, that's not really related to violence or crime, it's just calls about encampments. Now, can we in our office provide an alternative for people to call? Can we find outreach teams that can go out at, on demand? When there is a call for service, when LAPD and armed officer intervention is not necessary, that's the system that I think we need to be working to set up to ensure that LAPD are able to respond when you need them to respond in a timely fashion. So that's really, I think, for me, in terms of my work in the district and in terms of my work um, in thinking about how the city can respond to the situation overall, that has really been what I've been pushing for. And this has happened through the multidisciplinary team in our district. This is through two staff members who will be serving as homelessness liaisons, who will be serving the small businesses up and down Ventura Boulevard. So that when they have issues related to homelessness, they can call us for support. This is what we're doing citywide through the um, crisis response teams, which are going to be housed at fire stations, which are going to go out in response to some of these calls. And the two pilots on unarmed crisis response that's happening in Hollywood and in Venice, which I would love to see once we've seen a little bit more of how they perform in action there. Whether we can expand them to more areas so that we can leave the police to do police work and have everyone else uh, available who is trained to do the work that now police are being asked to do.
Would you um, would you support having more police officers? Is that part of the plan or do you think that this action plan suffices for meeting the need in Los Angeles? I was listening to, on the radio this morning, they were, they were talking about the people running for mayor. And it's almost like they're trying to outbid each other. One wants another hundred cops, wants one thousand cops, one wanted fifteen hundred more cops. Um, I'll let you join the bidding war. I mean, and, and the, the question is number one, more cops. And number two is, is besides this action plan for nonviolent responses to situations, what other reforms need to come? What other needs to come, what other reforms, reforms need to come to the LAPD?
Well, you know, I think on this question, I think we can do more to make sure that we are uh, deploying our existing forces much more effectively. You know, I think we have had multiple controllers reports that have talked about the number of police officers, armed police officers who are essentially doing work that could be quote unquote civilianized. That means it could be much cheaper. That means they're doing things like manning social media accounts or doing desk work. Um, that I think would be better done by people who are not going through the LAPD Training Academy. And the controller's reports that have identified this, by the way, from the time of Laura Chick to now have identified hundreds of positions that are currently being filled by people who have gone through the police academy but who are doing work that doesn't involve them doing police, what we would traditionally consider police work. So to your question of, do we need to increase the size of the police force? I would also ask, can we better manage the size of our existing police force? Can we make uh, management of this force a priority for us? Can we hold uh, you know, police accountable for managing their time and their deployment more effectively? And this, as I've gone through and spoken to captains and spoken to leadership within the LAPD is certainly questions that I'm asking, I'm not on the public safety committee and I'm not on the budget committee. So my work has really been on housing, on homelessness, on um, and on economic development. And I've done a lot of detailed policymaking in those areas. But these are questions that I'm certainly asking about as we move forward.
Thank you. Um, let, let's take another issue and this one, I think, is in, in an intersection between city government, state, federal government. And, and that's transportation here in Los Angeles. Um, I, my daughter, who just gave birth to our first grandchild. So my daughter lives in Phoenix. Yeah, my daughter lives in Phoenix, Arizona. And people say, she's so far away. I said, actually, you know what? I can get to Phoenix quicker than I could get to Orange County on a Friday afternoon. Cause it's a quick drive to Burbank Airport, the flights leave every hour. And she lives twenty-one minutes from the, from the Phoenix Airport. There, there are moments in the life of this city when you can't get anywhere, no matter how long you sit waiting for the, to go. Um, and I know that's state, federal, it's a whole intersection of intersections. But you're the one sitting here, talk to me about getting transportation. Some kind of transportation system in this city that seems to work.
Yes, well, traffic, the eternal problem in Los Angeles. Um, and again, no quick fixes whatsoever. Uh, but I will say that I think we can do more to, to focus on getting people out of their cars and into other forms of transit, whether it be buses, whether it be trains, whether it be bicycles, whether it be walking. And I think that we can make investments that are really effective at making these alternative modes of transportation a lot more attractive. And we have been doing more of that in recent months and years in the city of LA. So one thing that we did, for example, this past week was in response to a new law that was passed at the state level by Assembly Member Laura Friedman. We lowered some speed limits along um, some of the corridors here in, in the city of LA. Which should make it safer for all of these other modes of transit to be able to use them. And I think there's a few streets that have been impacted by this in our district as well. Uh, we have, you know, I think in preparation for the Olympics have been looking at investments in major transit corridors for both uh, dedicated bus routes and uh, train investments across the entire city, including in many parts of the valley. And I'm excited about these. I think if we can invest in regular service along these lines, I do think that we can get people out of their cars and into these other modes of transit. I also do want to talk to you though, uh, Rabbi, about the connections between our local housing policies and the traffic nightmare that we experienced in Los Angeles. We have not built enough housing in LA for decades. Um, we're building more now than we have in recent years, but it's not enough. We need to build more. We have a very thriving economy here. And what that means when we have a thriving economy is that people want to live here. The jobs are here. They don't want to live far away, they don't want to live, uh, you know, in in, in Orange County or parts far afield, they want to live right here. But we haven't been doing the work to really enable the construction of of housing, of affordable housing, of, of the kind of things that would actually enable people to drive much shorter distances to and from work. And so I, I really think that what we need to be talking about, we can complain about traffic and we can talk about traffic and we can think about traffic. But if you talk about traffic without talking about housing policy, I think you're going to have an incomplete conversation about these issues.
Fair enough. So let me ask you another question along the same, in the same ilk of, of, of not just city government, but city government's connection with other governments. And that happens to do with the environmental, the environment, the natural environment we live in. Um, I was in Cape Town, South Africa some years ago, giving, giving some lectures where they invited me to come. Cape Town, South Africa, uh, like LA has a very limited water supply. And when they had a couple of years of drought, the city basically decided that they would cut their water usage and they cut water usage by forty-eight percent. It meant you took a bucket into the shower with you and that became the water that you flushed the toilet with. A little bit inconvenient, a little unsanitary, but it worked, forty-eight percent cut in water usage. Another example, I, I've lived in Israel for many years. Israel used to be a country which had severe water problems. They invested heavily in desalination plants. Today, Israel is a net water exporter instead of a water importer. Somehow I don't see those kinds of moves happening in the state of California, the city of Los Angeles. And we all know that the drought is here and it's getting worse. What do we do about this?
About the issue of water specifically?
Well, environmental issues in general, if you want to go beyond that. We can talk about air, we can talk about soil, we can talk about many of the environmental issues that we live with on a day-to-day basis here.
Yeah, I mean, I do actually, you know, I don't know the numbers because I'm still learning about it. But I do remember that our last effort to reduce water usage here in the city of Los Angeles was actually pretty successful. So during the last years of severe drought, and I know we're getting back into a period of severe drought. Uh, there was a big effort made by both LA City and LA County uh, officials and city leaders to try and reduce the amount of water usage that people were, were using in their own homes. And it did lead to a significant drop, but I don't, I don't know the exact number, so I'll come back to you on those, on those uh, details. The challenge I think that we're facing right now is that all of the low-hanging fruit. So we had, let's talk about air quality. Um, we had years of improvements in air quality here in LA. Um, you know, after the, the period of heavy smog um, that we had decades ago, we saw improving and, and improving air quality for a long time. And that happened through regulation at the state level and at the federal level, through tailpipe, changes in tailpipe emissions laws at the federal level. That also happened because of local laws around industrial use and, and um, and, and other kinds of emissions producing um, uh, uh, sites. We were actually able to make significant progress. Now, over the last few, couple of years, five years, let's say, we've actually seen a worsening of our air quality. Now that's partly because our temperature is going up and when temperature goes up, ozone production increases at, in, in, in our atmosphere. And so you have worse air quality here in, in the city. But the thing that I think is most important to take away from that discussion, and this is not going to be a great answer for you Rabbi, because it's, it's more of a, a problem statement than a, a, a response. Which is that we're in a moment now where any action that we can take on these issues is very complex. There is no equivalent to improving our air quality or addressing our water challenges. That is the equivalent of building some desalination plants. Like everything that we need to do is incredibly complicated. Everything that we need to do requires us to have inter-jurisdictional cooperation. It may require us to have public-private partnership. It will almost certainly require people doing things that they don't want to do. Whether it be reducing their water usage, whether it be um, traveling less in their cars, like whatever it is, it's going to have to require some changes. And so I, I guess my response to you is really just to say, we have some tough challenges ahead. And I think all of the low-hanging fruit in terms of addressing our environmental goals, that's all gone. We only have the tough stuff ahead. And I have recently been appointed to the Air Quality Monitoring District here for Southern California. It's ten thousand square miles, I'm the city's representative. And the reason I was appointed to this body, I think, I don't know. Um, I think the reason that the mayor appointed me to this role is because I have shown a willingness in my legislative work at the city and in my work in my own district to take on hard challenges, to bring an unlikely coalition of partners together to address some of these challenges and to make sure that we're making measurable and accountable progress on these issues. So I hope that we can do more. And I hope that you'll give me a chance to do it right here in our district.
I appreciate it and I, I appreciate your forthrightness on all of these questions. And I, I really do appreciate your recognition of the complexity of these issues and not trying to sell us on simple solutions that we all know are simply fantasies. Let, let me finish our conversation with two more general kinds of questions. Uh, again, I was listening to the radio this afternoon and they're, they're talking about all the people that are lining up to run for mayor of LA. Some really interesting characters, it's going to be an interesting election.
Yes.
Um, what would you like to say to the next mayor of LA? What would you like to say if you could sit with that person face to face? For an hour like we've just done, what would you like to say to that person about our city?
You know, I think if I were to sit with our next mayor, I would say to them that I hope that they have the courage to do the tough stuff. And that I hope that they're not just using this as a platform to get to their next stage in their own personal careers. I think a lot of the things that we need to do here in Los Angeles will involve making tough decisions, whether it's standing up to unions, whether it's standing up to um, industries, whether it's standing up to uh, residents who may not want certain kinds of resources to be placed in their neighborhoods. You, everything that we need to do will face opposition. And I think what we need, oh, and you have to stand up to all the council members, all fifteen of us who are going to be telling this mayor what to do and telling that mayor to get out of our council districts because it's ours and what that mayor needs to do, she needs to tell us, no, for the good of this city, I'm going to take your power away and I'm going to tell the supervisors what's up. Um, and that's what I want. I want someone who has the courage to stand up to all of the different forces who have a stake in Los Angeles and to say, I'm the mayor of Los Angeles and I feel a real responsibility to solve these problems. And if that means I have to say no to you, and if that means I have to stand up against you, that I'm willing to do that. That's what I want from my next mayor. I hope that's what all of you want.
So let me ask you one more, we've talked about all these intractable problems of, of the unhoused, of environmental issues, transportation issues, crime issues, policing issues, political, political uh, issues. Um, what gives you hope? What, when you get up in the morning, you have two small kids, you're sending off to school. There's got to be something that motivates you to think that you can make this a better environment for them. Um, what, what gives you hope about living in this city and about the work you do in the council?
Well, the work in my own district gives me hope. I have seen what we have a I have seen what we have accomplished just over the last year and change in terms of finding resources, finding opportunities, getting people indoors who have been living on the streets for a very, very long time. I've seen what happens. We've, we did this, oh, this was so fun. We did this rental outreach program. So we had all these volunteers come in, we had our staff come in, and we knocked on doors in the poorest census tracts of our district in apartment buildings to let people know about rent relief that was available to them. And so many people that we talked to didn't know about it. They didn't know that they could get money from the government to stay in their homes to cover their rent, and they were so scared and they were so struggling. And I remember one young woman, she cried. She cried when she found out that she was eligible for for these kinds of resources. It was remarkable. But what gives me hope is the work that we've been able to do. I think if you put your mind to it, there's so much work to be done in L A. And if you have the right team, and if you have the right level of enthusiasm, I think you can do a lot. And that gives me a lot of hope. And I love my staff, and I hope you all get to know them, and they give me a lot of hope. But I also think that you know, I've lived in other places in America. Um, I grew up outside of Boston in a suburb. Uh, I was an, you know, I was an immigrant to America. It was not, you know, I I was bullied a lot. I I had a, you know, I didn't have a lot of friends. I didn't feel like I belonged in in that town. Even when I graduated high school, I didn't feel like I belonged in that town. But I came to L A and I ran for office here. And when I ran for office, two thousand volunteers wrote postcards to tell people that they thought I should be an elected city councilperson here. I've never felt the sense of belonging in any other place in America. That's what makes L A so special. That's what we're fighting to protect here in Los Angeles. And I know that my children feel that. I know that my children will never feel the sense of isolation that I felt growing up in that suburb in Los Angeles. They are at home. They are Angelenos and they are proud. And I just want to make sure that this city continues being that for as many people as it can be. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm here fighting for.
Well, thank you. Thank you for spending this evening with us. And uh, thank you for, well, welcome to Encino. I I hope that uh, I hope that we get to continue this conversation for a while, and we get to do some important work together to improve the environment for our for our families. Thank you so very much for being with us. Thank you to Kevin and Stella for uh, joining us this evening and helping us. And thank you to everyone who came tonight to join us for this wonderful conversation. Um, in the chat, you will find the link, I think, Kevin. I mean, Kevin put his uh, his email and the link, and he's our local representative. Local staff person for the uh, for the Encino-Tarzana area. So you're, if anyone has issues they'd like to raise with specific issues, right? We can talk to Kevin. And we'll do this again someday soon, have a continued conversation about about the politics of the city of L A and how we can make this environment uh, a better environment for us all. So councilperson Nithya Raman, welcome to Encino. And to everyone who's joined us tonight, thank you so very much. This concludes our program tonight. Please join us for further programs here at V B S, uh, learning, prayer, gathering together, spiritual development. That's what we do, and that's our contribution to the city environment. Take care. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. And thank you, Rabbi, for leading this great discussion.
Take care.